Okay, welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for January 22nd, 2024. Can we start with the roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutia.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn.
Here.
I want to begin the meeting by taking note of a remarkable anniversary tonight. Conrad Lee's tricennial anniversary on the Bellevue City Council. And he started in 1994 when he was just a young lad. And when you were first elected, we only had 90,000 people in Bellevue. We opened the Bellevue Skate Park and the Mini City Hall, and it was the Garden Delights first night, first time inaugural year of that.
And today, we have a diverse population of 154,000. We are a tech hub in the East Side and maybe in the whole country, and we had a huge expansion of our parks, offering and carefully planned growth downtown.
Yeah, and the council has had to make thousands of decisions and taken thousands of votes about projects and policies over the last 30 years, most of them with Conrad Lee on the dais, and he keeps up with every one of them very well.
Conrad served as deputy mayor in 2010 and 2011, and then mayor in 2012 and 2013. Councilmember Lee is passionate about public service, and he is a familiar face at the very many, many park openings, cultural celebrations, and city hall events over the last 30 years and more.
A former regional administrator for the U.S. Small Business Administration, Conrad has consistently supported the city's economic development efforts, and the council's first member of Asian descent, Conrad has supported efforts to bring equity and cross-cultural connections throughout the city of Bellevue.
Everyone up here recognizes the long hours of preparation and deliberation required to serve on the council of a growing city. Councilmember Lee's willingness to keep putting in the time for the people of Bellevue is inspiring and remarkable.
And with that, we congratulate you and give you a chance to speak, and then we can do a picture if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. And it is really a surprise, and I least expected to have this opportunity to be recognized by fellow council members. As you know, that in politics, you sometimes don't know who your friends and enemies are, but in this case, we are very blessed. I'm in the city of Bellevue. Bellevue is a great city. It naturally is endowed with the great people coming to Bellevue. I first came to Bellevue 58 years ago because Bellevue is such a great place for families, great school, well, good environment, and it's a great place to raise family for the future. And we're still the same, basically. We're still here because it's a very welcoming, very forward-looking, we're looking for the future for young people. So this is a great opportunity for me to thank you, my colleagues present, and also in the past. And we're very fortunate, even, you know, just recently, we have two new council members added to the podium. And we've seen so many changes, but it's all for the better, it's all for the good. And of course, the challenges are different, so we have to be always be nimble, always be flexible, always looking forward while we can do the best we can. And there's always give and take, you know, we have to understand that in order to make things work. And so I feel very blessed that I came here as an immigrant, just like many of you are, and we are even more so. When I first came, when I first ran for office, there's less than 10% minority in the city. Right now, we are over 50%. So this brings, again, this United States motto, we are a nation of immigrants, and we live, and we said our motto, we'll welcome the diversity. Diversity is our strength, indeed it is, but we need to make sure that we know how to work on it, we know how to make progress, we know how to develop our talents, because when people come here as new immigrants, they have a lot to learn. And I did the learning, I put through learning about the government, like many of my colleagues did, and so I was very lucky, fortunate, I have support of lots of people. Most importantly, lastly, I want to say, our staff is wonderful because they are part of our community, they are looking forward, they work with us, and so this, you know, recognition, without the staff, without my colleagues, it would not be possible. So I'm very proud that we have continually looked at the audience, we're young people, we have very different diversity from all over the world, and we're still growing, so I want to be sure that we're all on the same page. We talked about that before, you know, recently, there's a book, well, not recently, it's 10 years ago, it's called The Voice in the Boat, it's teamwork, and we are working as a team. We're working as a team from the public, you, as you or you are, and then the staff as a team, and then the council members, we're all part of the team. Team member means we have to be working together, we have to be willing to make compromises, we have to be looking at the interests of the people, of the city as a whole, and we all need to be growing together, and we need to have equal opportunity for everybody, for all of us, doing the best we can, helping each other. So thank you very much, I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen-House, will you lead us in the flag salute?
Certainly. Can you all rise, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
Thank you for saving me.
Okay, we have three proclamations tonight. The first one is Black History Month proclamation. It will be read by Councilmember Stokes and accepted by Anthony Austin and Yvonne Adagala. And what we'll do is we'll have you read the proclamation, we'll have you come speak, and then we'll go to the next proclamation, and when we're done with all three, we'll do three separate photos, okay? So go ahead, Councilmember Stokes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the history, story of the history of Black History Month begins in 2015, half a century after the 13th Amendment abolished slavery in the United States. Early work done by historian Carter G. Woodson to bring attention to the need for acknowledging and accurately representing Black and African-American history led to Black United Students and Black Educators at Kent State University officially establishing Black History Month in 1970, and whereas beginning in 1976, every president has declared the month of February as Black History Month to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout the American experience. And whereas Black and African-Americans have made innumerable contributions to our nature, a nation worthy of recognition and celebration, engaging America and indeed the lives of every American through social, artistic, cultural, political, and economic advancement. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a more just society that lives up to its democratic ideals and serves as both a celebration and a powerful reminder that Black history is American history. And whereas the disturbing instances of violence against Black community members our nation has endured over the last several years remind us that we have very far to go to end racial injustice and inequity in our country and local communities, and whereas the city of Bellevue is strongly committed to equity and opportunity, striving to raise awareness of its history and the contributions of communities of color through the city's Black History Month events. The city is very excited to partner with community organizations to host Elevated Voices, an art exhibit at Bellevue City Hall during the month of February featuring Pacific Northwest Black artists to honor Black History Month with the reception of February 1st, 2024 at 6:00 PM, and everybody here is invited. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2024 as Black History Month, and urge all citizens to join us as we reflect on our shared history, commemorate and reaffirm the contributions of Black people to our communities, our country, and the world, and continue efforts to battle racism and build a society that's more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. So Anthony and Yvonne, come on up. Anthony is Chair of the Bellevue Diversity Advisory Network, and Yvonne is Secretary of the Bellevue Diversity Advisory Network. Welcome.
First of all, we'd like to thank you for doing this, for taking the step to recognize Black History Month. I'm going to start with a movie everyone should know, The Lion King. And at the very pivotal moment when Mufasa turns around and takes back his kingdom, it begins to take back his life, it happens because his father's spirit tells him that he has forgotten who he is because he has forgotten his past. There is a quote that is often ascribed to the continent as a whole, it's called, they say, an African proverb, where they say, "If you do not know your history, then you do not know your past, and you will not have a future." Black history is incredibly important. I look at it differently because I am an immigrant from East Africa, the place that they call the heart of humankind. I wish I could say that my village is quite close to Old Devia Gorge, but it's not, it's about three hours away. And we on the continent look at all, all the enslaved bodies that were taken from the continent and brought here and made lives here as family. It is important that we recognize the history in all its colors, the good, the bad, the uncomfortable, the joyous, and this is the only way we'll move forward to build a society like we say we want to have in Bellevue, one that welcomes the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers, for this proclamation. We, on behalf of Bellevue's Diversity Network, appreciate the efforts and the good, strong work from your body. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Have a seat, and then I'll call you up again later to have a photo with us. Next, we have the Americans of Chinese Descent History Month proclamation, which will be read by Councilmember Lee and accepted by Ken Chu, a member of the American Coalition for Equality.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's my extreme pleasure to read the following proclamation, because I'm a Chinese-American as well, American of Chinese descent. But before I do, I'd like to acknowledge Senator Patty Cudore, and also Patty, Senator Lisa Wellman, who supported and was co-sponsor for this legislation. And also, I want to acknowledge Ken Chu, who's in the audience, for his effort and his organization to make this happen in the state of Washington. Whereas, more than 19% of Bellevue's population is of Chinese descent, which is the largest percentage of any community in Washington State. And whereas, members of the Chinese diaspora throughout the United States have varied perspectives, experiences, and approaches in how they perceive their identity as Chinese-Americans and Americans of Chinese descent. And whereas, in May 2023, Governor Jay Inslee signed a bill designating January as the time for people in Washington to commemorate the contributions of Chinese-Americans and Americans of Chinese descent to the history and heritage of our state. And whereas, Washington is the only state with a month-long recognition of the Chinese-American community, and whereas recognizing the experience of this community in America must also acknowledge and reflect upon the somber history of mistreatment and abuse that Chinese-Americans have historically endured. And whereas, the city of Bellevue is seeing its diversity as its strength, embraces and honors the rich cultural heritage and important presence of Chinese-Americans in our community's past, present, and future. Now therefore, I, Conrad Lee, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue and Bellevue City Council, do hereby proclaim January 2024 as Americans of Chinese Descent History Month in Bellevue, and encourage all residents to recognize the hard work, accomplishments, and influences of generations of Chinese-Americans, including new immigrants, in our community. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue.
Thank you, Conrad Lee. Councilmember Lee. Is Ken, do you want to come on up? Thank you.
Do you also have a statement from Bellevue?
Sure. Welcome.
So first of all, thank you so much, Mayor Robinson, and the City Council members for this important proclamation in honor of Americans of Chinese Descent History Month. Thank you, Councilmember Lee, for helping bring up our proclamation request from American Coalition for Equality. And I have, we just received a letter from Senator Patty Cudore, so I'm going to read her letter. So, Dear Mayor Robinson, thank you for introducing a proclamation to recognize in January 2024 as Americans of Chinese Descent History Month in the city of Bellevue. I was proud to co-sponsor Senate Bill 5000 last year to declare January as a Chinese-American, Americans of Chinese Descent History Month statewide. This month showcases the power we have in Washington to recognize and grow from our history. Expanding historical education empowers Washingtonians, both young and old, to better understand the community and that make Washington the state that it is. This month asks us to reflect on the impact that Chinese-Americans have had on the enrichment of our state and city, steps like this proclamation and designating a special month as opportunities to inspire and educate the public. Thank you for declaring January 2024 as Americans of Chinese Descent History Month in the city of Bellevue. This proclamation makes me even prouder to be a resident of Bellevue. Sincerely, signed, Patty Cudore, Patty Cudore, Bellevue, Washington State Senator, 48th Legislative District. So that's complete Senator Patty Cudore's letter. So, back to my speech, so we would like to, we look forward to work with the city of Bellevue to promote awareness of Americans of Chinese Descent History. Thank you. And with that, we have a Bellevue student would like to share his experience.
Yeah. Hello, I'm a student at Inner Lake High School. My name is Christopher Yu, and personally, as part of an effort to promote Chinese history, I took part in leading research for an informational flashcard project. Now, throughout this project, I learned of the great history and contributions of Chinese people towards the growth of this nation. And here's an example. I'm sure many of you have heard of the contributions of Chinese immigrants on the transcontinental railroad, but did you know that the canal between Lake Union and Lake Washington here was initially constructed by Chinese laborers? So during my research, I couldn't believe the vast impact of Chinese descendants. The more I researched and the more I learned about the contributions and struggles of our Chinese community, the more I gained an appreciation for the hard work and dedication of all Chinese descendants, both in the past and the present. So with so many contributions by Chinese people in areas ranging from architecture to medicine to art, I'm so glad we can take some time to celebrate the contributions of Chinese people. With acceptance of this proclamation, I hope that more people can learn and discover the rich cultural heritage, contributions, and history of Chinese-Americans in the United States. So thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Go ahead and have a seat, and we will do our last proclamation. And that one is Human Trafficking Prevention Month proclamation, which will be read by Councilmember Zahn and accepted by Claire Suma de Weria, who is one of our treasured small business owners. She runs Belden Cafe. Go ahead, Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a very important proclamation to me, and so I appreciate the opportunity to read it. Whereas human trafficking involves the use of force, fraud, or coercion to obtain some type of labor or commercial sex act, every year, millions of adults and children are trafficked worldwide, including cases in every U.S. state and territory. And whereas the Federal Trafficking Victims Protection Act of 2000 established a commitment to combating human trafficking to address this crime that weakens the health and well-being of individuals, families, and communities. And whereas every year since 2010, President has dedicated National Human Trafficking Prevention Month in January to raise awareness about human trafficking and to educate the public about how to identify and prevent this crime. And whereas human trafficking can happen to anyone, but certain populations are disproportionately at risk, such as people affected by abuse, violence, poverty, unstable living conditions, situations, or social disconnection, indigenous communities, LGBTQ+ individuals, individuals with disabilities, and undocumented immigrants, illustrating the importance of centering equity and justice in efforts to combat trafficking. In addition, traffickers often take advantage of instability caused by natural disasters or conflict to exploit others. And whereas during this month, we honor the efforts of governments, businesses, law enforcement agencies, support organizations, advocates, and community members here in Bellevue and around the world who are raising awareness and working to stop human trafficking. And whereas the city of Bellevue emphasizes that everyone has the power to help make a difference in combating all forms of human trafficking by gaining knowledge to recognize, report, and fight these crimes. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim January 2024 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the city of Bellevue, and urge residents to learn more about ways to help at humantraffickinghotline.org. If you or someone you know is a victim of trafficking, call the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 1-888-373-7888, or text HELP to 233733. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call Claire up, and Claire previously worked at Best, which means businesses ending slavery and trafficking. Welcome, Claire.
Hi, good evening, members of the City of Bellevue Council and the Bellevue community. I'm here with a deep sense of gratitude and purpose as we come together to address this critical issue that cuts to the core of our community, human trafficking. It is an honor that goes beyond words, and it's not just a recognition, it's a heartfelt call to action for each and every one of us. Human trafficking is a brutal violation of human rights, it strips away the freedom and dignity of vulnerable individuals who don't have a voice. In this city, we will not turn away from this injustice because everyone matters. This proclamation showcased the spirit of collaboration that defines who we are as a city and as a community. It recognized the importance of partnership with law enforcement, local small businesses, and residents. On any given day, we stand united against this heinous crime. Each moment is an opportunity to save a life and prevent a generation of trauma. But we have to actively engage to bring awareness. This is through this, we can find powerful protection against human trafficking, and we strive to mobilize each one of us to be proactive allies. Thank you for letting me speak here to call for brighter and safe future for all of us with your own waving support. This gives our community the fuel to eradicate human trafficking from our midst, and together we can forge a city that every individual life matters and enchain from exploitation. I'm grateful to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Beautiful. Why don't you stay up here, Claire? Claire, let's do your picture first, so let's go down and, you know, all right, well, we've got it, we can, that's okay. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve today's meeting agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next up is oral communications, city clerk, do, or, yes, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are five pre-registered speakers on the list, so before I start calling names, I will go over a few of the rules that the council's put in place. So the total time for oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to the city of Bellevue government. Person speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, person speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. And in both of those categories, the presiding officer is authorized to give preference to those who have not spoken to the council in the last 60 days, or who will be speaking on a topic that will come in front of the council in the next 60 days. Each speaker will be given three minutes to speak, and only three speakers will be allowed to speak to one side of a particular topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Alisa Peterson, who is joining us virtually. Ms. Peterson, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. My name is Alisa Peterson, and I have become the recent Executive Director of Eastside Human Services Forum, and I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself personally to your council and the mayor, and I should be meeting soon with Councilmember Zahn, and I just wanted to let you know, I'm here tonight to listen to the discussion about intergovernmental affairs and the upcoming legislative session, and your thoughts on human services, housing, and healthcare.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, and Councilmember Zahn is our liaison to the Eastside Human Service Forum.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Alexa Nguyen-House.
Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and City Council members. My name is Alexa Nguyen-House. I am eight years old, and I live in the Lake Hills neighborhood. Recently, I was made aware of the planned redevelopment of Eastgate Sunset Village, which includes the removal of local small businesses that I really like. My family frequently goes to this shopping center to support Dairy Queen and the teriyaki restaurant. I also go to Dairy Queen with my friends Maggie and Catherine after school or after soccer games. Please don't let us lose these types of small businesses that create our community and wonderful memories in Bellevue. I strongly encourage the city's development services to deny the land use amendment, it is vital that that development in Bellevue reflects the needs and values of its neighborhood residents. Thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is Maggie Dawson. I am eight years old, and I live in Renton. I heard by Alexa what was happening, so I think that if you tear down these buildings, you tear down memories too. But if you don't, then you make more memories instead of less. So don't tear down these buildings. Thank you for listening.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Craig Speel.
Did I have the handout? Craig. Good evening. My name is Craig Speel, and I am a resident of the city of Bellevue. As you may recall, over the past year, I and others have spoken several times regarding the effectiveness, objectivity, and inclusiveness of community engagement efforts. And tonight, I'd like to share my appreciation of several actions the city has taken to help address many of these concerns. First, I want to acknowledge and appreciate City Manager Carlson and staff who embraced the recommendation to record and video stream all commission and board meetings. Another positive change is moving the signup time for oral comments to noon. This change will enable residents who typically are commuting or picking children up for childcare a chance to participate. And combined with the plan to apply uniform policies across all commissions and board, I believe the city will be taking significant steps to promote meaningful engagement. Additionally, this last week, the city hosted two community engagement events. These included the Tree These included the Tree Canopy Luca Meeting and the Comprehensive Plan Open House. I attended both events and was very pleased to see the level of attendance, dialogue, and two-way engagement with staff. We have come a long way since COVID and Zoom meetings. Another effort I want to acknowledge is the coordination of strategies to create a toolkit for best practices across all departments. This is an important step to promote inclusiveness, objectivity, and transparencies. But building on these efforts, I want to encourage staff to go a step further and embrace what is recognized nationally as the key pillars of community spectrum engagement. In the handout I provide you, the framework developed, which is developed by the International Association for Public Participation. This model includes five core elements, which build upon each other, maximizing community engagement, impact, and trust. These include informing, consulting, involving, collaborating, and empowering. And by design, this framework establishes a two-way dialogue with the community in each step of the process, underscoring objectivity and reducing the risk of bias. I believe by embracing this framework, Bellevue can create more effective and practical solutions. And by drawing on the rich knowledge of the community stakeholders, decisions can be optimized in building a transparent and trustworthy engagement process that's respected by all. In summary, again, I want to thank the staff for embracing many of the recommendations that have been made over the past year, and I look forward to working together where collectively, we can realize the potential of our great city today and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Paul Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thanks to Councilmember Nuenhaus for supportive recycling. I live in Sumamish. I care about recycling and composting and reducing what we send to the landfill. After all, my garbage goes in the same landfill as yours, so our trash know each other. What I'm sharing about Bellevue, I've learned through public record requests. Let's start with an important fact from the King County Survey of Trash Sent to the Landfill, which showed that 2/3 of what is sent to the landfill can be either recycled or composted. So 2/3 of our trash is actually not trash. I'm going to walk through the first of your three handouts. The first table reflects the tonnage disposed of by categories for 2022 and year-to-date 2023. The second table shows how the city's tonnage is disposed of. Most notably, 55% of what the city disposes goes to the landfill. That amounts about the same as 2022. This is a good time to note that if 55% is going to the landfill, only 45% of what we dispose is diverted to recycling and composting. The third table down shows the diversion rate for each category. Of note, commercial and multifamily locations only divert 27% and 21% respectively. So essentially, 3/4 of what they dispose of goes to the landfill. 3/4? Table four reflects the missed opportunity that I noted at the start of my talk. Since 2 out of 3 pounds we put in the landfill could be recycled or composted, last year Bellevue could have diverted an additional 40,000 tons to recycling or composting. The next section reflects the urgency we face as each month Bellevue sends to the landfill another 3,600 tons. In Table five, at the bottom, you see the categories listed, and the red indicates where the category does not have a recycle container and where the category does not have food scraps or yard waste container. It's striking that most of the city's businesses, 1,179 of them, do not have food scraps and yard waste containers. This in a city with several hundred restaurants. It's more striking that 309 of our 521, or about 2/3 of our multifamily locations, have no way for their residents to compost their food scraps. It's not available. Handouts two and three provide recommendations for improving our diversion rates, and I'll review those in a future meeting. The City Council is active in supporting climate change initiatives as your consent calendar includes your support for the Eastside Climate Partnership. I believe the people of Bellevue want to live sustainably. They need the tools, and they need to receive individual feedback about how they're doing. Like the PSE Energy Report we all now receive, feedback is a catalyst for change. I'd like a response. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker on the list tonight is Alex Zimmerman.
20 seconds, why? I don't talk one word. Why you steal my money? Oh, pardon my time. I'm sorry. Yeah, I want to speak about something. What is Agenda Number 10? About priority 9/23. What's happened in 9/23 in Bellevue is so unique. It never happened, 100%. It never happened before like this in state Washington. Bellevue Council established a war, established a government antisemitism right now. Approve Council Mohammed. You know what it means. For deputy mayor is absolutely show to everybody. So right now, we have a pure government antisemitism. It's beginning of new era in America. In Bellevue, always first in this situation.
Mr. Zimmerman.
This is what has happened in 23.
Mr. Zimmerman.
You see this 23?
You're not speaking to the agenda.
I'm talking about this, you Nazi pig.
You're not speaking to the agenda.
Why you interrupt me? I give you analysis in 23.
I'm going to ask you to direct your comments to the agenda.
What does you mean? What does you mean? I have right to speak about Agenda 23. It's Agenda Number 10.
Let's hear it.
You stop interrupt me. You stop cut my time. This exactly what's happened. You declare war not only against you, about all Americans. Make Mohammed a deputy mayor. First-time election is show to everybody.
He's done.
No worries. I see exactly what is happening in 23.
We're done here.
I spoke about this. This is 23 in Agenda. Where is the problem?
Could you escort Mr. Zimmerman out?
Why?
Thank you.
Why? I speak everything in Agenda. This happened in 23.
I'm going to take a little break here. Let's see, we're on the report of the City Manager. And I know you've got some good news to tell us. And after you tell us, we are going to come down and have a photo. So just letting the council know that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. We have one item under the manager's report. We are fortunate to be joined by Tina Nelson, who's here to present staff the city's American Public Works Association re-accreditation plaque for utilities and transportation departments. Tina is currently the APWA Region 9 Director representing Alaska, British Columbia, Alberta, Saskatchewan, Washington, Oregon, Utah, and Colorado, large area, and we're lucky that she is here in Washington. And so here to accept the plaque and make brief remarks are Lucy Liu, Director of Utilities, and Andrew Singleakis, Director of Transportation. And with that, I will turn it over to Tina Nelson.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and anyone else that might be listening in. Thank you so much for this invitation. I appreciate very much this opportunity to provide a few words. Public works, that is my passion. Representing APWA is a true honor. One of the privileges of being part of the National Board is to get to connect with others about APWA, including events like these, recognizing exemplary work in public works. So just a quick note. What is APWA for those of you that may not know? APWA, the American Public Works Association, formed in 1937. It's a not-for-profit international organization of over 32,000 members involved in the field of public works. APWA serves its members by promoting professional excellence and public awareness through education, advocacy, and exchange of knowledge. APWA is headquartered in Kansas City, Missouri, has an office in Washington, D.C., and 62 chapters and 97 branches across North America. Here, in the wonderful state of Washington, we have one chapter, the Washington State Chapter, which is the third largest of the 62 with 1,500 members throughout North America. And I believe there are some of those members here tonight. I have myself been in the public works profession for 30-plus years. Serving the public, and serving the public well has always been and still is my goal. Public works has many responsibility, and the ability to serve well comes with a well-organized approach. Accreditation and staying accredited are steps in that direction. It takes an effort to get there, but it brings back dividends. I myself work for an accredited organization, Kitsap County Public Works. So I see firsthand the benefits, and I'm aware of how to get there. So what does accreditation do? Why is it a good thing? Accreditation is the mark of professionalism, indicating a public works agency has made the commitment to continuous improvement in the delivery of public works operations and services in the community it serves. Accreditation recognizes an agency's policies, procedures, and practices, which have been evaluated against nationally-recognized management practices determined to be appropriate for that specific agency. So what kind of benefits? Why would you do this? There is increased efficiency. Documents and practices are in one place. That improves processes and operations. Succession planning. People are leaving. Retention and knowledge are important, and all of these documents assist with that. The ability for someone that comes on that is brand-new can actually go and find how things are currently done. Your transportation and utility departments were evaluated by a team of experienced public works professionals from California. They reviewed 123 practices to confirm that both of your departments were in compliance with these internationally-recognized management practices that are necessary for the operations and responsibilities of the City of Bellevue. Both departments received 100% compliance with all applicable practices. Not that this is anything new to the City of Bellevue. This is the sixth accreditation for your utilities department, which was actually the first department to be accredited in the state of Washington. And your transportation department, not far after, which this is their fifth. And not only were you 100% complete, but the evaluation team also recognized the department for six model practices. These model practices will be shared with other agencies throughout Northern America who are themselves working toward accreditation or others that are looking to improve on their current practices. A few of those standouts are communications and media relations, emergency management and employee contact information, traffic operations policies and procedures manual, and traffic operations and traffic calming. City of Bellevue is one of 201 accredited agencies in North America, one of five cities in the state of Washington. Others include the City of Bainbridge Island, Bothell, Shoreline, and Tacoma. I want to thank you, City Councilor Mayor, for supporting your department in this work and recognizing their staff for setting a great example in services that others can count on and services that are important to those that live and work here in the City of Bellevue. So it is now my pleasure to present this plaque to the directors, Liu and Singleakis. I'm sorry, Singleakis. I butchered that. To recognize their achievement. And of course, also, it does take a lot of work to get there. And the accreditation managers, Krista Oserveen and Chuck Beck, they deserve a lot of credit.
Nice.
Congratulations. And transportation.
Would you like to speak before we do the photo? Okay. Thank you, Tina.
Well, I do want to thank Tina for being here tonight. I'm really pleased that this is our fifth accreditation. And I particularly want to thank the staff. It's an awful lot of work to go through this process, but it really helps us keep our policies and procedures in order. And also just give some validation that we are either meeting or exceeding national standards in what we do. And we had a lot of new staff that participated this year, so it was extremely helpful to get them up to speed on our policies and procedures at the transportation department. Lucy?
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. I also would like to thank APWA and Ms. Nelson for being here tonight. And I also want to just also take a moment to express my gratitude and appreciation for the city staff that have spent many hours this year to prepare us for the accreditation evaluation. The process requires work, but the benefits are certainly many. The process is accreditation is a mark of efficiency and quality in public works. This process verifies that our practices and procedures are consistent with industry-best practices. And so we get a lot of value for the work that staff does to ensure that we're meeting these high standards. And so it's truly an honor to be recognized by APWA for accreditation since 2004. It's a testament to the quality of our work. And for these reasons, we make it a priority to participate in the accreditation process every four years just to ensure that we continue to implement best practices, which allows us to continue to deliver high-quality services to the community. So just thanks again, APWA.
Terrific. Let's get a picture with you. Okay, we're on to the consent calendar. Do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have three study session items tonight, two housing-related, and one covering our city council priorities. City Manager, would you like to introduce the first one?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. First study session item is a funding allocation recommendation from the Executive Board for Regional Coalition for Housing, or ARCH, for their annual funding round. Staff is requesting council consider providing direction to return at a future meeting with legislation approving the recommendations that the team will outline in tonight's presentation. And joining from the Community Development Department is Emile King, our Planning Director. And from ARCH, Lindsay Masters, Executive Director, as well as Elsa Kings, ARCH Housing Trust Fund Program Manager. And with us, I will hand it over to Emile.
Thank you for the introduction, Acting City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Shall we wait for the presentation to show up? Perfect, I'll just go ahead and get started. So I'd like to offer up a few opening comments on behalf of the Community Development Department before we get into the specifics of the recommendation. And I would like to introduce council to a new staff member we have who's going to be working on affordable housing. This is a priority for the city, and we are now fully staffed up in our affordable housing team at the city. So Hannah Bonmiller comes to us from the City of Renton, and she has a great background in this region working on affordable housing issues, and we're really happy to have her at the city. She'll be part of future presentations, and you're going to see her out in the community in the coming months, working on the comp plan in the coming months, working on the comp plan and then their affordable housing work that we're doing.
Welcome, Hannah.
Thank you.
So I'll keep my comments brief before we get into the presentation. I just, I want to note that we do have this housing trust fund discussion about funding, and then we'll be following up with the complimentary work on the housing stability program to get money out to those in need in our community. The city of Bellevue has a strong partnership with ARCH, goes back over 25 years. You're going to hear a bit about some of those projects that we have funded in the past, as you learn about the funding recommendations for this year. And really, the continuing support for the ARCH trust fund is consistent with our most recent affordable housing strategy for 2017, and the key tenet of that was creating more affordable housing. So tonight, we are asking for council consideration of the ARCH executive board's funding recommendations, and based on your direction, we would be returning to a consent agenda in the future for formal action of the Bellevue City Council. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Lindsay and Elsa. They're going to run through the process and the recommendations, and then we will be asking for your direction at the conclusion of this presentation.
Thanks, Emile, and happy to be here again. My name is Lindsay Masters. I'm executive director of ARCH, and I have a couple of topics I want to talk about before I hand it over to Elsa to walk you through the actual projects that we're recommending this year. But for the benefit of newer council members, and as a refresher for longstanding council members, I just wanted to quickly highlight the program as a whole. We actually go back 30 years with Bellevue, having a partnership with other cities in East King County to pool investments together into affordable housing. Those have been probably our most successful strategy in helping to create and preserve affordable housing for a whole range of diverse populations in the community. We've collectively, as a coalition, put in well over $90 million in local resources into the program. That's come primarily from direct funding, but has also been contributions of land as well as fee waivers. We have, I think, done a really great job in helping to distribute these housing opportunities across the region, trying to make sure every community has some kind of affordable housing options. And we've also tried to make sure we are serving a diverse range of populations, and so you'll see many different types of housing projects that are going to come before you over the years. Just a little bit about how it all comes together. So each year, we ask our member cities to identify what funds they'd like to voluntarily put into the funding program. We do have some metrics for tracking those and some goals for those over time. This year, we had around $4 million in contributions that were planned, including 1.4 from Bellevue this year. And then over the course of the funding process, we recognized the significant demand for the resources, outpaced what we had available, and were able to work with city of Redmond to leverage another $2 million that they were able to put forward to two projects located in Redmond. In the past, we have primarily relied on city general funds, and so have had ongoing conversations about how to identify other funding options and tools that might help us grow that fund over time. In recent years, we've had some sales tax credit options that cities have taken advantage of. That's been an important new resource. We also have the benefit of some loan repayments coming back, so we try to make the fund as sustainable as we can and reinvest those loan repayments back out to new projects. You can see in the pie chart that there are, almost all the ARCH member cities contribute to the trust fund. Some are only able to contribute a little bit, but it all comes together to make up the whole. This year, as I noted, we had applications far in excess of the funding that we had available, almost 12.9 million in requests. We're actually pretty excited about the level of requests this year. It represents a significant amount of housing that we don't always have the opportunities every year. So in past years, you may see there will be only 300 or 400 units of housing, so in this year, we've got well over 800 anticipated. Just a couple more points about the projects that are being recommended to move forward, which is five out of the seven in that slide I just showed you. The vast majority of that housing will be affordable to households with incomes up to 50% of median income. This corresponds to where you see the greatest need in the community, as well as some of the largest housing need figures that you are required to plan for. In addition, we had a significant share of family-sized housing in two- and three-bedroom units. And then the final point about the program that we really like to highlight for cities is the return on your investment, the amount of other public and private funding that we're able to leverage by putting in some local resources. In the past, we've achieved about a 10 to 1 leverage ratio. This year, it's about $15 in other public and private funds for every local dollar, and that includes both the funds coming in through the trust fund, as well as the city's housing stability program that we'll talk about later. If you ever have questions about all the different funding sources in this chart, we'd be happy to go into any detail on that, but it includes sources that are allocated at the federal level, down through state agencies, as well as local and county funds. We're also excited this year to see significant investment from the Amazon Housing Equity Fund, and that's been a more recent addition. With that, I'm going to let Elsa walk you through the individual projects, and then we'll be happy to take questions at the end.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council members. My name is Elsa Kings. I'm the Housing Trust Fund Manager at ARCH. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm going to go over the projects that we are recommending for funding with you tonight. The Spring District project is a transit-oriented development with 234 affordable units within a master development. The project is located on surplus property that Sound Transit is transferring at a deeply discounted rate for affordable housing, together with a spur property donated by the city of Bellevue. The project has been a priority for ARCH for a number of years. Bridge was originally selected in 2020 through a Sound Transit RFP that also included funding commitments from King County and ARCH. Since 2020, Bridge has adapted their plans in response to the pandemic and changing market conditions. The proposed project is now designed and able to proceed independent of the market rate portion of the development. This is Bridge's second time applying for funding. ARCH did make a preliminary award of $350,000 last year, and this year, we are proposing an additional $650,000 for a total of $1 million. In addition to the ARCH Housing Trust Fund award, the project has already secured significant commitments from the county, and we are expecting a commitment from the state, as well as an allocation of tax credits and bonds in the next couple of months. Additional funds from the city of Bellevue's Housing Stability Program will be discussed in the next presentation. Next slide, please. The Loris Senior Project is a transit-oriented housing development located within a quarter-mile of the Kenmore Park and Ride and Sound Transit Station. The project is proposed in partnership with TWG, a private affordable housing developer, and Imagine Housing. The model replicates a successful partnership between these two entities on another senior project in the city of Kirkland, and that is currently under construction. Due to limited funding, we were not able to fully fund this request, but we are recommending an initial investment of $250,000 for this project to show a very important early commitment. The project is expected to leverage significant funding from the county, which will be utilizing TOD funds that are set aside specifically for this area in which the project is located. The developer has already acquired the property and will be applying, and will expect them to apply for additional funding next year. Next slide, please. The Aventine Project is a 68-unit apartment building in downtown Bellevue that came to us in a very important opportunity last fall. The Low Income Housing Institute, or LIHI, is under contract to purchase the building and plans to preserve the existing affordable units and convert the market rate units to affordable housing. The building is in good condition, and the rehab that is proposed is modest, including the conversion of two rental units into case manager's office to provide onsite services for the remaining 66 rental units. 22 of the 66 units will be for households exiting homelessness, and 10 of the units will be set aside for households and residents that have physical disabilities. ARCH is recommending an investment of $600,000. Again, this is an early commitment with the expectation that we will see another application in 2024. Again, in the next presentation, we will go into more detail on the proposed funding from the city of Bellevue's Housing Stability Program, which is critical for the development of this, for the acquisition of this project and moving forward. Next slide, please. The Emma McRedmond Project is an existing senior housing building with 32 apartment units located in downtown Redmond. Catholic Housing Services is proposing a substantial rehab of the building to improve the building's energy efficiency and to extend the useful life of the existing structure. The project is permit-ready, and it does have HUD funding already committed. In addition to preserving the existing housing, this project will preserve very valuable federal funds in the form of Section 8 vouchers. ARCH is recommending an investment of 1.1 million for this project, which includes $600,000 in supplemental funding from the city of Redmond. ARCH is hopeful that these investments will close the project's funding gap and will allow it to move forward to preserve these units, as well as preserve the Section 8 vouchers and the federal funding. Next slide, please. Overlake TOD Project is located in Redmond. It is directly across from the future Overlake Light Rail Station, and it also is located on Sound Transit surplus property. Bellwether was selected as the developer through an RFP process and is planning to build 33 homes for households at 30% to 80% of area median income. A large share of the units will be for much-needed, will be large units for families, two- and three-bedroom units. 10 of the units will be set aside for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Bellwether is working with the city of Redmond and a coalition of nonprofit partners for the programming of the ground floor space. This will include small business incubation, nonprofit organization support, culturally-informed community services, and services provided by the city of Redmond. Services for the projects will be provided by HomeLink and Sales. Sales is a DDA contracted service provider who will provide supported living services to the residents with disabilities. King County has already made a significant investment into the project, and similar to the Emma McRedmond Project, the city of Redmond has committed an additional investment of 1.5 million to enable ARCH to make a total award of 3.5 million. Next slide, please. This is a summary of the recommendations that we are proposing, and includes the investment from the Housing Trust Fund of a total of $4 million, with an additional investment of 2.1 million for the Emma McRedmond and the Overlake sites. The total investment from the city of Bellevue for this project is $1,379,200. Next slide, please. Sorry, one more thing on this slide. As previously noted, we were not able to fully fund all of the projects due to limited capacity in our funding and limited availability. Two smaller projects are not recommended at this time for funding. One of these may be able to access additional funding from the state and could potentially proceed without ARCH funding. The other is encouraged to continue working on their proposal and reapply to ARCH. Thank you.
So now we're happy to take questions and are asking for your direction.
Great. Let's start with the motion. You have motion language on the blue pages here. If somebody would like to make a motion to start us off?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I move to direct staff to prepare legislation to approve Bellevue funding of $1,379,200 for the fall 2023 ARCH Housing Trust Fund round of five recommended projects for council consideration and action at a future meeting.
Second.
Thank you. So we'll open it up for discussion. Is there anybody with comments or questions on this? Okay, council member Lee.
Thank you. I think this is an extremely valuable effort for the last 20-some years, and it's helping the region to address the housing situation, and ARCH has been a model for regional collaboration. So I've said enough of that. Sometimes, however, you know, the devil's in the detail. But I think by seeing what's happening, we see that it's definitely meeting a need. You know, all the cities are stepping up. So it's going to come down to, you know, how much is fairly divided between all the jurisdictions and what, you know, is necessary. So I have a couple of questions, which is really tied to funding. I know that we have responsibility to, you know, come up with the money, funding. But there are other resources as well, which you mentioned, a few private debt, you know, private assistance, Amazon Equity Fund, so on, so on. Number one, I believe that we should make a stronger effort to look at more non-traditional way of funding, because this has concerned the whole community, right? Government cannot solve all the problems. We can be catalysts, which we have been doing very well. Now also, things are changing, that the federal government seem to have, you know, ability to help us. And just caught my attention here is in your page eight in your slide, recommended projects, proposed funding sources. The top one is the blue one, LIHTC/federal. That seems to be, you know, obviously, it's a very important funding source, it's one of the biggest ones. So give us, give me, give us a little bit of what it's, it's there, what opportunity may be there, and while we're looking for it, maybe we can do something so that, you know, we can be more flexible, we can do more projects. I understand private debt, I understand local public fund, we got to do what we have to do, but with the federal funding, that's interesting to me. I'd like to know more about it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I love that question because we have been talking about federal legislation for a long time to expand the low-income housing tax credit program so that states like Washington, which fully utilize every dollar of credit that we get, can actually increase that over time. The program is, it's actually a kind of a public-private partnership. It allocates private tax credits to investors that invest in low-income housing projects, and in exchange, they get tax credits. And so the challenge that we have locally is the ability to compete for those resources within Washington State. This year, I want to say there was an eight to one level of interest in the credits compared to what was available at the state level, and so we have to work and advocate very hard for the projects that we support to be able to compete for those resources. We compete with other projects in Kent County, but also projects around Washington State. I would say that the value of the local resources is actually really critical in that competition, so projects that come in with some form of commitments at the local level and support from the community compete much better than projects that don't have that. That said, we would all collectively like the low-income housing tax credit program to be bigger and to be able to support more projects, and there has been federal legislation contemplated just about every year to be able to do that. And I think I've been happy to see it supported in the past by city of Bellevue in your legislative advocacy.
Follow-up question is, how do we compete better? You probably, or anybody who knows better, so that we can too better? We don't know what we don't know. Yeah, so I believe that the city and you guys should have a real good effort to work with us to make sure that we are more competitive. If we don't know, if we don't try to, we'll never be competitive, right? This is a competitive world. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
You'll come back to us?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll bring it back as part of our next affordable housing update. I think is a good time to maybe talk about funding a bit more.
As part of the competition for this federal credit, tax credit. Thank you.
And probably our legislative agenda as well. I'm going to go next. First, I want to thank the representation that we have from Washington State in DC for fighting so hard for the funding. They've done a really good job, and I know that with our legislative agendas, we're still asking for more, so, but they've done a really good job. I'm going to say something kind of provocative here, because when I look at the Loris project in Kenmore, it's hard for me not to think about what happened last week with the Plymouth Housing Project that was proposed to the council for supportive housing. That was a project that was going to prioritize residents of Kenmore who needed supportive housing, and I understand that the council voted that down. ARCH is a regional fund, and when a city votes down housing that serves the people in their city, it makes me think that they want the rest of the cities to take care of the people who need supportive housing in their city. And that, to me, is not being a regional player, it's just my opinion. And so I'm just curious how that trues up. I know Loris is not, I know that the Plymouth Housing Project was not asking for ARCH funding, but Loris- but Loris is, it's in Kenmore, and this is regional funding. How, why do we give regional funding to cities that are not regional players?
I'm happy to try to respond, and just to know, we're still processing what's been going on there and kind of our next steps with that project. We actually did have funding already committed to that development, and, but as you know, there are a lot of conditions that come with our awards, and so no dollar is spent until a project is actually ready to break ground and start construction. That said, it's pretty devastating what's happened, and so we are looking to try to preserve as much of the work that's been put into that development as possible. We know that it's difficult conversations communities sometimes need to have about citing projects like these, and so we're looking for how to support our members in having those and giving them all the tools and resources to be successful with that effort. But we know that it's not always successful, and so sometimes it can take time to come back around and figure out how to move things forward. With the project that's being recommended tonight, there are some key differences, and again, that's just an early commitment of funds. No dollars would be expended until the project actually is ready to break ground and have a building permit. Couple key differences there is that project was not proposing to go through a development agreement, which is the process that Plymouth was utilizing. They also have control of the property, whereas the other project relied on property that was going to be contributed by the city. So there are fewer hurdles, we think, for this other project to get through, but we are carefully considering all the ramifications of what's been going on there and how to best move forward.
Well, you're asking for Bellevue to contribute to this.
To the Loris project?
Yeah.
Yes.
And it's, that's kind of hard for me, but I hope that we can share with Kenmore some of the work that we did in putting supportive housing in Bellevue. It is hard to do, as we all know who worked on that, and would love to share the process that we went through and some of the work that we did with the neighborhoods to make that successful.
Yeah, we would love that.
Okay, thank you. Can you help us share that information?
Absolutely. Yes, we have, we have already offered that information.
Okay. Any, go ahead, Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. Well, I, I'm excited that we have this many projects that you think are good viable projects for recommendation. What I wanted to make sure I understand, so the request was $12.8 million, and the recommendation is four. So does that mean that these other projects that were really providing more seed money than, that we will anticipate that they will be coming back for more funding? And so that's one of my questions. And then the second one is, to Councilmember Lee's point, with the, with the LIHTC, the federal grants, so our 1590 Housing Stability Fund, that potentially could be the matching that would make us more competitive. I know that's going to be the next presentation, but I just wanted to understand a bit more about how, how that piece works. And then I'm just excited to see that for every dollar we're putting in, we're actually that force multiplier of $15 of whether it's state or federal or private dollars. So if we could just keep ratcheting that, that force multiplier up, we'll be able to get farther.
Does it make sense to postpone the 1590 conversation to the next topic, or do you think it's important to do it here? I just don't want to confuse anybody.
Maybe you just answer the other questions.
I can just comment on the first question. So some of the projects are a partial, a partial commitment, and we do expect them to come back. As I mentioned, the, just the act of making a commitment is still important and can influence a lot of other potential funding decisions between now and next year. The project in Bellevue that we are, that we are supporting, that will be fully funded at the local level and ready to move forward this year. We also thought, and this again came out of a lot of deliberation with our community advisory board, that full funding for the other significant TOD project in Redmond was, was important. So even though we didn't have adequate resources as Arch, we were able to work with the city there to, to get that fully funded. The other projects that have a partial commitment, again, those we do expect to come back, and then the two proposals that are not being recommended this evening could potentially come back, but it could also potentially proceed without Arch funds. So we, we would support, again, their application to the state to be able to make up for the funds we're not able to put in.
Yeah, so I'm really excited about this. There's been years where we haven't had a project in Bellevue, so it's good to see that, not only projects from other partner cities, but within Bellevue itself, and especially the pivoting for the Spring District TOD to still make that happen and move forward. So kudos for making that happen. Thanks.
Good point. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I have a comment. Just echo Mayor's concerns about the region and how we should work as a region. But on the positive side, I'm very excited about all of the applications that you had, and it not only shows our commitment to affordable housing that is really important, just not in Bellevue, but as us in the whole region. So excited to see all of the different type of housing, from studio to three-bedroom. See all of the efforts that you have in different income level, 30% AMI to up to 60 and 80% AMI, and for different people that we have that they need those affordable housing, from workforce, disabilities, veterans. So kudos to you, and thank you for allocating that money and doing, going through all of those processes to find those good projects to invest. Hope that we have the completion of all of the 8,400 units as soon as possible. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Stokes?
You won't go. I'll go next. But.
Yeah, I think it's a good conversation. I, the, the whole thing we're wrestling with is, this is not just a Bellevue problem or concern, it's the region, and we're working together, and we've been doing it for a long time on this. And the fact of the matter is, the need, demand greatly outstrips the available funding, and it, and it's, it only comes at certain times and all, and the need for the housing is all going. So it is a complicated thing, and as you indicated, all these, their funding comes up, maybe, hopefully, we will spend this and have something done on it, but there could be some changes. So it's a matter of how you put this together and address the goals we have, and, but it's not a, it's not a real simple matter. We need, we can get, we need to build this house, so we're going to get this money and give them the money. So I think what, and, and it's a little complicated thing. Over the years, it has proved to be very valuable, it's proved to be successful. That's, that's the whole underlying piece on this. And I, I think that it is frustrating, because we would like to do more, but I think what it comes down to is, we're achieving a lot more than we would do in most any other way. And I think we have it set up so that it, things move around, sometimes you, you get some things built before others, but it has really, over the years, really added a tremendous amount of, of needed housing and done in a very, very good way. So I think this is, and we're raising good questions. We always want to know, make sure we're looking at all these different pieces, but I really think that this, this particular one is, fits within what we've wanted to have come from Arch Housing, and that we will be looking forward to this, and hopefully, we will, one of these days, go to a groundbreaking for this building. So I'm very favorable on this, and I think the work you're doing and the way it's gone is, is the best, I think, we've had in for Arch, for, you know, going forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Newenhouse?
Thank you, and thank you for all your great work on this, excuse me, and bringing this forward this evening, and, and the thoughtful approach and the great comments so far by my colleagues on this, and certainly, it's one of our top priorities and for, on the whole, I'm very excited about these summary of recommendations, all worthy projects for sure, and always want to be that great team player as we take this regional approach. Having said that, I want to drill down on one project in particular with you. So one of them is the, is the, not one of them, the one, is the Lehigh Project. Lehigh, this is their first project in Bellevue, am I right? At least I'm not familiar. Second project? Okay. But Lehigh has more of an expertise in tiny villages more than anything, do they not? Or am I incorrect on that? Could you answer that?
Historically, they're a housing development organization.
Okay. Okay. What's their other project in Bellevue right now?
It's August Wilson Place. It's also located in downtown Bellevue, not too far from, from this property.
Okay. And have they been a good partner with that project?
We've had a great experience working with them there. We also went out and did a site visit as a part of our review for this, for this project, and found that the property was in excellent condition. We kind of checked in with City of Bellevue on any kind of issues that have come up over the years and have found it's been a pretty smooth operation.
Okay, so you have a high confidence that that, that type of relationships and the checks and balances that we have in place will continue, because this is, just looking out for the taxpayer funds on this, and, and I just want to be assured that, that this project is going to be a success, and I always appreciate your expertise and, and really, your knowledge is so valuable on this, and that's why I want to ask some of these tough questions, to make sure that, before making this investment, that we're assured that we're going to, you know, we're going to see the ROI, and certainly, this is a strong need in the community, but also want to know what the relationship looks like, and that they have a great relationship, they fit Bellevue, and they have a great relationship with the, with the neighbors surrounding the, surrounding the project. So thank you so much for answering my questions, appreciate it, and I'm ready to vote for this.
Okay, and Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation, I think the work you do is so important. I mean, clearly, this is the kind of housing that doesn't get built any other way, so this is really where we need to make sure that we're putting our money in supporting the efforts, look forward to doing that. Clearly, a regional need, you know, we see the project in Overlake, that's a few blocks from Bellevue, so it's easy there to see how, working together, we're all going to reap some important benefits. Also, too, you know, as, as has been mentioned, the need is clearly way more substantial than we're able to fund now, and I do hope that as we see these projects come online, we see the benefits, we can look for ways to provide some additional funding and maybe step that up in the future. So certainly look forward to that. Appreciate all the comments that were made by my colleagues, and look forward to voting in favor of moving this forward. So thank you.
Okay, and with that, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, as we have a little bit of a changing of seats here, you will recognize that these two items are very connected, and the process for the allocation is very connected. This next one is an allocation recommendation specific to the City of Bellevue's Housing Stability Program. Staff will review this year's funding recommendations, introduce another new staff member to the table from the City of Bellevue, and staff is requesting council consider providing direction to return at a future meeting on this item as well. And so we have Emile and Lindsay staying at the table. They're joined by Patrick Tippi, Arch Bellevue Housing Stability Program Manager, and they are going to introduce a new staff member to the city as well. Emile?
Thank you again for the introduction, Acting City Manager Carlson, and good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Staff are really excited to be here tonight to provide the staff recommendations for the Housing Stability Program. So this is a, a city-led effort to take those House Bill 1590 funds and put them into action in the City of Bellevue. Before we get into the presentation, I do want to introduce Patrick at the end, he's a relatively new staff out at Arch. He is focusing on the Housing Stability Program. We have Sabrina right here, who is very new. She's in Community Development, focusing on the program. And then we also have Andrew in the audience, he is in the Human Services Group, so he works on those dedicated Behavioral Health and Human Services funds that he and Tony bring forward to the, to the City Council. So tonight, we are asking for council consideration of the recommendations. We'll be walking through those in detail. Some of those projects were in the Housing Trust Fund as well. And for this discussion, this is mainly focused on the capital requests that do include the operations, maintenance, and services for those buildings. So the, the discussion is both for the capital, so building or acquiring buildings, as well as that important services that need to go into many of these buildings to be successful. Based on your direction, we would bring back legislation at a consent agenda at an upcoming So tonight, we'll be doing a brief background on the Housing Stability Program. We'll follow that by a review of the request for proposals that we put out last fall, and then we'll go into some detail on the staff team recommendations, and then we'll come back and ask for direction from the council. Little bit on the overall framework. So we are in our third capital funding round right now. This is the framework that the Bellevue City Council set up back in July of 2022. You can see that we have these four different buckets of how we wanted to split up the, the money in a conceptual manner, so starting with the funding for the staff oversight, you know, roughly 5% is below the average of what it takes to, to run a program like this. We're being very effective and efficient with this tax money and getting it out to the Bellevue projects. We have the Behavioral Health and Human Services Fund that Andrew and Tony are in charge of, so that's on its own Request for Proposal cycle. And then tonight, we're really focusing on the capital projects and the, the operations, maintenance, and services. We are bringing down some of the money from that top bucket, so money that we had set aside for potential bonding in the future or land acquisition, since we aren't needing to go do that right now. We're basically taking those money, putting them into the, to the RFP for the capital, so we can get the money out the door as effectively and efficiently as possible. So with that, I want to hand it over to the project team, and they're going to go through the process and then the funding recommendations.
So we have just a couple slides, again, kind of on general background for the process. As Emile noted, we have a separate process that's well-coordinated with the Arch Trust Fund to invite proposals for the capital funds and the ongoing operations, maintenance, and services dollars that would be go along with those capital awards. Each year, we do come up with an RFP that will outline the available funds for the year. This is announced at the same time that the trust fund dollars are announced. And then we host pre-application meetings, and I would just want to give a shout-out to Patrick for a lot of the proactive outreach he did in trying to notify more potential partners about this new resource and get folks interested in looking for opportunities in Bellevue. We then have a review process with Arch staff, providing technical review and underwriting for the proposals, and then facilitating review with a city staff interdepartmental team that includes human services staff, development services, the homeless outreach staff as well with City of Bellevue. This is a separate process from the ongoing RFP for behavioral and housing-related services that also helps support existing needs in the community. So ours are really tied directly to new development projects. A lot of how this program was set up and the framework that Emile touched on was driven by the state statute that enabled Bellevue to take advantage of this funding, so it prescribes what we can use those dollars for. It can go to acquisition and construction, operations, maintenance, and services for new units, so not for existing units of affordable housing. And it also helped to determine some of the funding priorities that the city established in terms of a focus on preventing homelessness and creating housing stability, a focus on those with the lowest incomes, up to 30% of median income, and then there's a prescribed set of populations that are eligible to, to live in the housing supported by this funding. We think after a few years, we have a pretty smooth coordination between this process and the trust fund, and are going to keep working on improving that each year. This just shows you a snapshot of what the last few rounds have looked like, and you will recall, in the first year of the fund, there were really no projects ready to move forward. It took some time for us to identify partners and sites that could take advantage of the resource. We then had a better year the second year, and I think this year, we have finally hit the right milestone for the number- And I think this year, we have finally hit the right milestone for the number of requests sort of meeting the amount of funds that we have and being able to put those to immediate These are just a snapshot of the awards we have already made, starting with a Lifewire project serving domestic violence survivors in 2021. That project was recently completed and is successfully in operation. We made an initial commitment last year to the Spring District project. So, again, that was a very important early award and show of commitment from the city that's been able to, that's helped them to continue developing the project and get it to where it is today. And then, we were able to make an award to the Plymouth Crossing Project out in Eastgate that's helped them to expand their behavioral services program there. And then, a similar award of ongoing dollars to Lifewire. I'm going to hand it over from here to Patrick to walk you through a summary of the recommendations for funding this year. And I'll just advance when you need me to.
This year, we received three applications for projects that were requesting both capital and the operating and maintenance and services dollars. We're really excited to see all three of the projects. They met all of the eligibility criteria set forward by council. They are all in different neighborhoods, different geographies within the city. And two of the three of these projects will be bringing units online in 2024. So, again, quick implementation of providing affordability for the units. So, we're really excited to bring forward all three of these projects for your consideration. The first recommended project is a second allocation for the Bridge Spring District project. Last year, there was a $6 million award. This is an additional $500,000 loan for the project. And then, the OMS award for this project, about $485,000, is to provide onsite supportive services for the individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities that will be living onsite. It's a great model of having co-located housing with good diversity of people onsite. It's provide case management, coaching for families, coaching for individuals, support for people to be able to live in that independent setting while still living in a larger community. That onsite supportive services will be provided by open doors for multicultural families. The second project we're looking to recommend is the Lehigh Aventine Acquisition. This is, the recommendation is for a $13.5 million loan. I want to note that $3.5 million of that is a bridge loan with a three-year term to help acquire the property that was being marketed on the open market, taking solicitations for buyers. And Lehigh was able to secure site control of that property. It'll be for 66 units. Thirty-four of those units will be supported through, for individual developmental disabilities, excuse me, individual disabilities, families exiting homelessness, and individuals exiting homelessness, and veterans that are experiencing homelessness. So, really a good diverse set of populations. The project is being supported with rental assistance in the form of 32 project-based vouchers from King County Housing Authority. And finally, well, and the referral for the families exiting homelessness will be coming from the Bellevue School District. So, Lehigh is really excited about that partnership that they have developed there. The onsite supportive services for case management will be provided by Lehigh. And there will also be onsite behavioral health services provided by CIMAR, which is the Behavioral Health Community Health Clinic here in Bellevue. And these units will be leased up in 2024. And then, the final project we're recommending is for the Catholic Housing Services Maurice Albert House. This is in the Crossroads neighborhood. It's the Catholic Housing Services is working through the rehabilitation of an existing 49 units of people, of seniors there. They'll be adding one new unit that'll be supported through this program and creation of new staff offices that will have resident supportive services there that'll help the seniors age in place, connect with the community, connect with their health services, and really help them thrive in their housing. The onsite supportive services and the amount of about 13,000 per year will be provided by Catholic Housing Services. We wanted to provide one summary snapshot since we talked a little bit about the two different housing programs here together and how they complement one another. In total, the two programs are recommending $20.3 million, creating 890 total units, 350 of which are in Bellevue. A good number of those will be coming online in a quick basis, especially here in Bellevue.
So, that concludes the presentation, Mayor. We're happy to answer any questions or hear any feedback you have. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to take a one-minute break. I need to speak privately with the city manager. Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure of something before we continue discussion with me involved in it. So, Councilmember Zahn, would you like to start us off with a comment or question on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am super excited about these three projects.
Excuse me, Councilmember Zahn, we're having an interruption here. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I was so excited, didn't even know what is. You know, this is amazing because I feel like these three projects, what I heard is preservation, quick wins, family units. We know that our school district is struggling with enrollment, and so, we're really trying to figure out how to bring more units online. And I, while I keep thinking about the fact that we're going to get even more applications and we could bond against future revenues, I'm glad to see that we can bring down some of the funds that we maybe had earmarked potentially for bonding for the future and take advantage of it now. So, I think this is amazing and knowing that the Lehigh project are going to be referrals from the school district. And also, I think that for me, when I looked at this presentation from the last one with Arch, what I saw was the spike in the 50% and 60% AMI, which is important to have, you know, housing at that level. But these ones here are getting down to the 0% to 30%, which is, we know, the most challenging in order to fund. And so, I just appreciate all the outreach that Patrick, and welcome to our team, right? Because I think that there's more and more opportunities as developers are learning more about Bellevue and the fact that we have this Housing Stability Fund. And hopefully, we actually can move the needle even more and we can say yes to more projects to the point where we actually have to leverage bonding against future revenues. So, my one question is this. You had a slide that talks about the funding for '21 and '22 and this year. So, how much unawarded banked capacity is currently available that we haven't spent? Just curious.
Yeah, if council adopts the recommendations today, at the end of 2023, there'll be a remaining $1.9 million.
Oh, that's great. So, literally, we're using up almost every dollar that we have. So, that's great. I am really looking forward to supporting this. And I guess I'm hoping that, you know, we'll be willing to bring this back on consent because I think this is just a no-brainer. Thanks.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, it was noted, I mean, these are great projects, unquestionably, and we need them. And you picked them well. But my goal is to see how money goes a long way, as far as they can go. That's why I'm always asking, you know, how can we get the most out of our investments? The question, second question is, well, let's talk about this first one first, then we'll go to the second one. The Aventine Apartment Project, it's done by Lehigh, I think Councilmember Newhouse brought it up. It's a great organization, being around for a long time. The project they have, you know, Councilmember Newhouse, it's a great project. It's a main and 110th. And it's been, this, Lehigh's been around for a long time, maybe 25, 30 years. And they do a great job. That's why I have no problem of funding them doing it. See, they are continuing to contribute, you know, to the housing for the needed population. The question is about OMS. They ask for $300,000 every year because they're so good. They've been doing this for a long time. They know how to do it. They should be very efficient. They should know exactly how to run the thing. So, I'm just curious, why do they need us to subsidize for them for operation maintenance? That's one question, so. Yeah, then I have another question later for another subject. Go ahead, please.
So, the proposed funds for OMS would be going to pay for pretty critical staff that provides supportive services to the residents. They will be serving some residents that have significant needs that are exiting homelessness. And so, they have found in their experience over time, it's really important to have that dedicated staffing. We also had identified that this project had an opportunity to serve residents through local partnerships. And so, that meant, again, the need for some dedicated funding at the local level. An alternative path would have been for them to apply to other sources of funding from King County. Those would have required them to take referrals from a much broader range of referral partners. And so, we thought that it was a nice way to meet the city's priorities in serving local needs in Bellevue for them to take advantage of the opportunity to apply for local OMS funds.
Okay, so that money will give us added benefit, making sure that we are getting, yeah, what that they will otherwise not provide. Okay? Make sure that's going to continue to be the case. Second is, you know, we talk about diversity, all the development that's going on. Are we considering the building capacity of diverse developers going to this? To me, this is a big business now, right? We want to build capacity for people who understand the community that we serve. Are we including this as part of our consideration when we look for developers?
Yeah, a couple items. Number one, this is a key part of our affordable housing implementation. So, as we look at all the different things that we're doing in the city, this is a key one. So, and it has grown significantly just in these first three years, as we pointed out in the awareness and the money we can get out the door. As far as outreach goes, I mean, I'm impressed by the work that Andrew and Patrick and Sabrina pretty soon are going to be doing on the outreach to potential developers. So, we want to get everyone aware that we have this program and look at the range of different options we have to actually use it across Bellevue.
Yeah, because the first year, you have three applications. Now, we're in the third year. So, I hope that, you know, we have opportunity to get more diverse developers to participate in this.
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to see that number as possible.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, I think you could just probably copy and paste Councilmember Zahn's comments and put my name after him, so completely agree with that. Very exciting, bringing projects on in 2024 when they're really needed is just really exciting, really glad to do it. It's this kind of effort that really makes me proud to be a part of Bellevue and to help support the effort. So, well done, all of you. I'm curious about that 1.9 million. Is there any reason not to deploy that money right away? Is there a way that we could do that?
Yeah, we're recommending funding the full amount that was requested by each of the developers. And at this point in time, we didn't see that there was a gap beyond that that was necessarily needed from the funds at this point in time. And so, I think that that leaves opportunity for funding in future projects or in future competitive RFPs or through other means toward projects.
Yeah, we ready our RFP in the summer. So, before we know it, we're going to be putting out the RFP for the 2024 funds, and we'll just roll that money into the 2024 RFP.
Okay, great. Yeah, great. The sooner the better. Well done. Thank you.
Councilmember Newhouse?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm good to go. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, Councilmember Zahn, would you like to make a motion that I'm in favor of?
Well, the deputy mayor may want to speak and...
Well, after that. Just throw that up.
My comment is the copy-pasting of all of these comments together and just be that. The only additional sentence I add is, by the way, great work, Patrick, for all of your outreach and bringing all of this good project, is these are not just funding projects. We are basically investing in our community resiliency. We are investing in our future of this community, and I think is very, very important. So, I am really, really happy to be here and excited for what you are delivering today, the whole board presentation. It's such as exciting work. So, kudos to you all.
And I'll just say, I too appreciated what Councilmember Zahn and everybody has said here tonight. But, you know, I'm so excited to be using this 1590 money. That funding was designed to create housing to fill the gaps. It is the hardest to build housing, as you all well know. We're helping people with disabilities. We're helping families. We're helping the people with the lowest income to have housing in a city of opportunity where children can go to the public schools, get a good education, get a good job, and kind of break a cycle. And so, I'm really proud to have this in our community, and I'm very proud to have funding that we can use for this process because I think, as Deputy Mayor said, it's what we should be doing, and it does create a more resilient community. So, thank you for all your help in doing this. Councilmember Zahn, would you like to make a motion?
I would. I moved to direct staff to return with legislation approving up to a total of $14,221,579 in capital funds and $838,400 in operations, maintenance, and services funds for council consideration and action at a future meeting on consent.
Second.
All right. And it's okay to bring it back on a consent? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have one more presentation tonight for information only. And I'm just going to preface it before our city manager introduces it, that this is a very high-level presentation. I actually have a lot of comments that I'm going to be emailing to staff that I'd like them to consider before our retreat, which is coming up. But, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. So, this study session is an update on the implementation of the 2021 to 2023 council priorities, as well as how the work will continue in the future. There, you will see significant progress on the council priorities across all the target areas. And this is both a report on what's been achieved, and it also provides a base for looking forward. And so, to give the presentation tonight, joining from the city manager's office, we have Bianca Segal, Assistant Director, and Danielle Barwarren, Special Projects Program Manager, who did a significant amount of work for this presentation. So, I would like to acknowledge that. And with that, I'll hand it over to Bianca.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. And we're really glad to be sharing this update with you this evening of a lot of great work that's being done across the organization. And I'll let Danielle take you through the presentation.
Great. Well, it is our pleasure to be here on this topic tonight. It really is a good news story. We want to recognize all of the efforts, both by staff and by the council, in delivering on all of the priorities over the last three years. So, as was mentioned earlier, this is information only. We have a couple of things that we're hoping to get out of tonight. So, first, we're going to have some look back on what was accomplished in the last year. But we also want to give a little bit of information to you about how each one of these priorities will continue forward now that we've moved out of the 2021 to 2023 council priorities. We're also hoping to set you up, lay a good foundation for any upcoming conversations you may have about future priorities as well. So, a couple of stops on our journey tonight. We're going to give you some background information on the council priorities, a bit of some kind of overall information on the progress in 2023. I was asked, I asked for two hours on this, right? Nope, I'm getting the no. So, we're just going to do one or two accomplishments per, are we? No, no. Okay, so we'll just do a highlight or two by the strategic target areas. I promise, we'll see. And then, of course, we're going to have this icon running forward, not walking, running on these priorities. We've got a lot that we have accomplished, but even more to do. So, as you all may know, in 2014, the City Council approved a 20-year vision and also set seven strategic target areas. There are two and three-year sets of priorities that have come after that, and the latest is this 2021 to 2023. There were 22 priorities. Couple of things I want to make sure we lay and make clear before we move forward in the presentation tonight. A lot of these priorities are, they vary widely in terms of scope, scale, what the role is of... role is of the city, what the role maybe of our partners are in accomplishing the outcomes we're hoping for. So in order to measure our progress, once they were approved, staff went back and we created a three-year work plan. So when you start to see, you know, percentage completion, we're talking about that work plan. So these were tasks and milestones that staff felt that we could accomplish over the three years. There are many ongoing plans here, so when we say 95%, 99% completion, I promise we're not talking about completion of those big, large-scale projects. I wouldn't say that we're so far along on many of the big ones, but we are going to be talking about those work plan actions as we go through. So first, kind of highlight here, over 95% of those work actions over the three-year period are uncompleted or on track. So you can see the completion is in that dark color over to the right. Those that are on track, still moving forward, are, they're in the light blue. We have about 5% of the plan that is experiencing, we call it some disruption. Now, some of these are, you know, experiencing issues that a lot of other, a lot of other places are, things like maybe some staff vacancies, but specific to the three-year priorities, many of these are just items that are on hold because they're contingent or dependent on other planning processes. So they are experiencing some disruption, but a lot of them will continue forward. Now, we'll start with economic development. This is not only strategies for just pure economic development. A lot of this target area is really about our prosperity as a city and how we move each other forward. So a couple that we just want to highlight on economic development. While Bellevue is a hub for local and global business, there is also, you know, amenities, infrastructure, education. These all represent things that we can offer businesses and members of the community. So last year, council approved, as you may remember, the tourism promotion area to add resources for tourism marketing and for event incubation. And there is also the completion of a citywide retail survey, which is going to come back to council here in this year. Okay, transportation and mobility, this is a great one. So this is describing Bellevue as really a safe and multimodal city, which has reliable and predictable transportation choices. So there are quite a few priorities under this STA. Many of them have projects that are moving forward. They are on time, continuing, and they're budgeted for. A couple things that we'd like to highlight, there are 10 levy projects that were completed, a renewed and enhanced crosswalks in the last year, and under Vision 08, grant-funded roadway safety assessments were also completed. Now, as many of you will also know, civil construction is complete on the light rail in Bellevue, and we're looking forward to starter line revenue service beginning here in this spring. All right, so high-quality built-in natural environment. So this is the built environment that has it all. We're talking about things from a mix of housing opportunities and types to affordability, safeguarding our abundant parks and natural open space, many, many priorities that come under this, which represent a significant body of work. So a couple highlights we'll just have as we go forward. This year, we saw a significant increase in use of the MFT program with 62 affordable housing units and additional 58 that are in the pipeline. We also completed the funding process under, hey, the Housing Stability Program, HB 1590 for Behavioral Health and Human Services and Capital Investment. More to come, of course, on that. I hope many of you were able to make it as we talk about priority number six, F2, the grand celebration of the Northeast Gateway Plaza back in June. We also, under number seven, completed the Autonomous Vehicle Strategic Vision, which was also alongside a traffic data dashboard, and maybe one of my favorites, which is deploying weather sensors around the city that would help us to improve our winter weather response. Okay, just going back a bit. Number eight, you see updates on this regularly, so I'll keep it pretty brief. For the Environmental Sustainability Plan, there are 209 buildings that have enrolled in a clean buildings incentive program with another 130 benchmarks and 79 in progress. Now, number 10, so this year, of course, you'll know, the city council endorsed the recommended Bellevue Airfield Park Master Plan, which also included an aquatic facility as one of the park features. See for determination, once that has been made, it will return to council for consideration and adoption. Great places where you want to be. This is all about, while Bellevue is home for some of us, it is also a destination with arts and cultural opportunities for all. 11 Grand Connection, much work has been done on this in the last year, including advancing core teams for the catalyst for I-405 bridge crossing. A design contractor was also selected in Q3 for the non-motorized crossing. Number 12, again, a big amount of work here. The Northway Connector Project, which is led by East Rail Partners, opened in December, and the Wilberton Trestle, which is led by King County, completed its final design and went out to bid. So 13, this one is really kind of an ongoing Bellevue-leading catalyzing and partnering with our neighbors throughout the region on common goals. A couple of highlights here, so the KIT City Council approved a legislative agenda, federal and state, last year. We also secured four Sound Cities Association appointments and two through the Association of Washington Cities. And of course, staff is implementing a $120,000 Economic Development Partnership Grant from the Port of Seattle. Achieving human potentials about our caring community where everyone is welcomed. We listen, have really culturally competent community engagement. There is, again, as many of the others, so many things that we could highlight here, but a few that I just want to mention. There was the completion of a series of community conversations that were centered on racial equity and the cross-cultural project conducted last year. Staff will be in the process of drafting a new diversity advantage plan update and are working with the Centering Communities of Color team. They'll come back to you here soon on policy recommendations. Construction on a 100-bed, 100-bed permanent men's shelter is also, that's begun providing services, was completed in the last year. And safe parking, a, we have an operator identified. The contract will be coming in front of you in Q1 to create space. I believe it's going to host 20 vehicles and more, more details to come on that. Finally, high-performance government. We are a high-performance government, and so this target area really focuses on the services that we're providing to residents, as well as engagement, trust, and support that they receive from the city. So the Comprehensive Communications Plan, that is drafted and in progress. We're hoping to have it finalized in the next year. Number 19, this is kind of continuing work, developing and implementing customer service support technology. We've had some really great successes in the last year, including an open data enhancement project, which is going to enable public access to up-to-date city data on an online portal, as well as piloting a new version of the My Bellevue Chatbot. Of course, the 2023-24 adopted budget will continue implementation strategies to support our financial sustainability, as well as continuing some prior cost reductions and increasing revenue. Next up, you'll hear from us shortly as we start to plan for the 2025-26 budget. Number 21, we'll highlight, the branding initiative is in progress, but as we talked about earlier, it's contingent upon the completion of number 18, which is that Comprehensive Communications Plan. So more to come as we ramp that up in the next year. And finally, 22, some exciting work. The Bellevue Atlas Equity Atlas Project is under a final review by the city's Diversity Advantage Team, and that work is to create a racial and social equity composite index that's going to help us with data-driven decision-making. More to come on the performance systems and capabilities. So some next steps here, of course, as we mentioned, and is in longer form in your packet. The priorities have been integrated into the department work plans, they have been budgeted. A lot of these really are longer-term projects that staff have been working on in our continuation of past work efforts. Of course, you are going to be considering some priorities in the coming years, so we wanted to just lay that foundation for you today. All right, and as was mentioned, we are from the city manager's office, which means we have a bit of knowledge about these, but we are mostly here for the reporting and tracking. If you have specific questions, we can always follow up with you afterwards, but we're happy to try to answer anything you've got for us tonight.
Okay, thank you. Wonderful presentation. You know, it's not just good for the council to see the progress that you've made on the work that we've given you and the values we've created, but it's great for the community to see it as well. So thank you. Any comments or questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, just going back, just going back, had one question on number 20. The long-range financial strategy, what's our progress on that? I mean, that seems to be a fascinating one and one we could gain a lot from.
Yeah, so there are strategies for the long-run financial sustainability that were built into the last budget. Staff are going to be kind of continuing that conversation through the biennial budget process, and so there will be some further discussion with you all, and I think a budget workshop is in the works for this coming year.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, I just really appreciate this dashboard. I think it's really helpful for us to have that reminder. I was actually thinking that tho- those three years went by really fast, right? Because it says 2021 to 23, and I'm like, oh, right? So when we think about, you know, future priorities and then the carryover projects and, and I just think that it's really a system within systems, right? The work that we do is so interconnected, and I just appreciate having this framework. And I'm going to say that for me, I know that maybe the, these categories are not necessarily in any one particular order, but I almost feel like the one on high-performing government should be first because that is the foundation for all of these pieces, right? So having the long-range financial strategy, Comprehensive Communication Plan, city branding, technology, which then creates more visibility and transparency to our decision-making. So I'm really just looking forward to, especially in these areas where we talk about a, a plan or a strategy, how we, as we move into 2024, really move into implementation and the, the quick wins, as well as the long-range piece. And so I look forward to the, our time together at the retreat because I do think that for a lot of these pieces, that next piece is really in the, how do we implement smartly and quickly, and who are the partners, so.
And I look forward to you bringing that up at the retreat.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation. You know, I'm the new guy here, so I haven't really had, my experience with the city has really been kind of external, more out in the community. And so in the last few weeks, having a chance to get to know some staff and to go through this and see all of the hard work that you guys do is really amazing. And so I love the team that's up here on the dais, but I also love the rest of the team here at City Hall, and I think you guys do an amazing job. It's, it's really important that we have policy and we have ideas, but to implement those and to do all that hard work really takes a lot. So I've been really impressed, appreciate, of course, your presentation, but all the efforts in helping us do all this good work for the city. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have in our packet a written report of Intergovernmental Affairs Monthly Update, so we are not going to have a presentation or discuss it, but our Janice E. Atkins is hard at work. Right now, we have a short legislative session at the state that she's working very hard to position us well to get our needs met here at the city level. And if you have any comments or questions on what's written there, please contact her. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.